All right, good evening. I am going to call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Welcome, everybody. I'm President Christensen. Thank you for joining us this evening. I'll ask the members to my left to introduce themselves, please.
Hi, I'm Annet Emma. Thank you so much for coming out.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Picard. Welcome, everyone.
Good evening. I'm Anupam Chudshidu. Thanks for coming out and welcome to the 25-26 school year. Wishing you all the best, family, students, staff. Have fun and take care of yourselves.
I am Patrick Kew. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Voss. It's good to see you.
Dr. Merritt, will you introduce yourself and your team?
Yes, good evening Superintendent Monica Merritt. Welcome to our board meeting this evening. I'd like to begin by introducing Ms. Diane Robertson, my executive assistant. Want to thank her for being here to take our minutes each meeting. Also, Mr. John Krieger for taking care of our technology and our social media needs. It's blowing up and he's doing a great job as we're so excited about the start of the school year. Want the remaining members of the team to introduce themselves to you.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Kurt Siskowitz Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. Welcome.
Good evening, Jill Minnick. I serve as Chief Finance and Operations Officer.
Good evening, I'm Jen Curry, Chief Academic Officer.
Good evening, Abdul Matt Yun, Chief Human Resource Officer.
Welcome, everyone. Liz Vartanian Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent Student and Family Engagement.
Great. I'd like to ask our student co-chairs to introduce themselves, please.
Good evening, Josh Patterson, Rising Plymouth Senior and Student Voice in Action Co-Chair.
Welcome, everyone. Arjun Swaminathan, a rising sophomore at Canton High School and also Co-Chair, SBA.
Yeah, great. All right, thank you, everyone. Let's stand for the Pledge of Legion. Arjun, do you mind giving us off?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. All right, we are moving on to the adoption of the agenda and approval of the consent agenda. This is action item number 26-08-08. Can I please have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we adopt the agenda, approve the consent agenda, action item number 26-08-08.
Can I have a second?
Second.
It was moved by Vice President Sudhu and seconded by Treasurer Kehoe. Dr. Merritt, can you please take us through the agenda?
Thank you, President Christensen. Our consent agenda consists of human resources transactions. Since our last time we were together, HR has been busy hiring champions for your consideration this evening. We also have some leaves and resignations. We have the approval of minutes from our regular meeting, that's on August the 12th, 2025, and finally, the final reading of policy 6550, that's travel payment and reimbursement.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. All right, I'm going to call for the vote. Those in favor, please say yes. Yes. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries 6-0. Mr. Bedu, can you take us through HR?
Yes, we have several new hires that's here in the audience today. So when I call your name, stand up, and it's quite a few of you guys. So when we finish, we'll take you outside and I'll give you your sweet treats and then welcome to your district. So I'm going to start first with Hannah Burkhardt. She's an elementary classroom teacher at Bentley. We'll give them all the applause at the end. Marissa Downs, elementary classroom teacher at Hoben. Alexis Ford, math teacher at Discovery. Rebecca Fuller, resource room teacher at Erickson. Lindsey Grant, elementary classroom teacher at Bentley. Michaela Julian, math teacher at Liberty. Lindsay Minch, GSRP preschool teacher at Canton. Caitlin Vella, resource room teacher at Workman and Erickson. And Alexandra Wick, art teacher at West. And we also have Brendan Majewski, who is being named as the Student Support Coordinator at Tonda Elementary. And last but not least is Andres Villasenor, who has been recommended for the Food Service Coordinator position. So at this time, let's welcome them all to Plymouth-Canton. So if they want to follow me to the hallway so we can continue, and I will give you your candy.
Thank you. Welcome to PCCS.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, we are going to move on to our Board Committee Reports in Action. Up first is the President's Report. I do have just a couple of things I want to say. I'm going to be brief this evening. You know, just like I said, I'm going to keep it short and sweet as we're gearing up for the start of the school year next week. I hope everyone is enjoying these last few days of summer. I know we're trying to pack it all in before we have to get back to all the schedules and getting back to sleep earlier and getting up earlier and all that fun stuff. I had the pleasure of attending the Welcome Back Gathering this morning and I just have to tell you, it was amazing. It was incredible. It was so fun. This is an event where all of our administrators, our teachers, our paraprofessionals, all got together to kick off their professional development their first week of school. I want to also say thank you to some of my fellow board members who were present, Member Picard and Member Voss. Thank you for also accompanying me to the event. It was held at the new PSEP stadium, so that was a great venue to hold everyone. In years past, it's been split up into two groups and because we were able to get outside and check out the new space, we were all able to squeeze in together, which was really wonderful. We enjoyed a few student performances as well, so I think that really warmed everybody's hearts and got us ready for the school year. So I'm wishing the PCCS staff a great week leading up to the start of school. And that concludes my presence report. So thank you. Okay, up next, we have Student Performance and Achievement with, actually, Member Westra is not in today. Do you mind taking over?
Yeah, because we haven't met yet.
Yes, exactly.
We do have a meeting coming up next Wednesday here in the boardroom at 5:00, so please join us.
Thank you for standing in. Up next, we have Policy Committee, Members Sudhu.
I do have an update for that one because we just met. So we had a meeting, our first meeting of the school year, and we reviewed the norms, the goals, and the charge of the Policy Committee, just a refresher for everyone in terms of why we're there and the kind of work that we do. We then moved into discussing the following policies. We reviewed the rescinded policy 2410 and discussed the intent of the policy to see if policy 2414 captured the intent brought forward by some board members and committee members. After a thorough discussion with committee members, legal counsel, and our Niola rep, which is the company that provides guidance on our policies, the committee decided to add language to policy 2414 to the effect, "Any school official, member of the board, or employee of the board who violates this policy is subject to disciplinary action." And this is referring to the prohibition on referrals for abortions. The updated policy will come to the full board for a first read at the next board meeting. I want to thank everyone that put a lot of time and effort into this, and I want to thank board colleagues, Ms. Picard and Ms. Voss, who attended the meeting and at the beginning provided citizens' comments. So thank you for your participation and being an attentive listener. We then moved into policies 2260 and 5111 that provide access to ensure that we have a safe space for all of our students for equal educational opportunities. Some other policies were brought forward to the board, to the committee, in terms of do we need to update those? We reviewed those policies with legal counsel, Niola, and the committee members, and at this time, the policies stand as is. No new language is needed, given that those policies ensure compliance with local, state, and federal laws. We briefly discussed policy 7320, gifts, grants, and bequests. Niola will bring us an updated version to the next meeting, which will be on September 23rd in the room down the hall at 5:30 PM, so please join us.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have Finance and Operations Committee with Treasurer Kehoe.
And once again, I'm a little freaked out because this is for a second time in a row we did not have the Finance and Operations Committee meeting. There was no agenda items, and so we did not meet last week when we originally planned to. So that's pretty exciting for me. I mean, we got to have some nice little break, but we will be meeting again on Thursday, September 4th at 5:00 PM in this room, and I think we're going to have to up our game considering how exciting things the policy is doing.
Policy was phenomenal today.
Yes, exactly. But please join us and we'll see if we can beat policy.
We're the best cookies ever.
Thank you very much. Okay, up next, we have Student Voice in Action with Josh and Arjun.
SBA has not met since our last meeting of the 2024-2025 school year. The next meeting will be around the start of the school year and with the date still being determined. Look forward to seeing everyone there, and we hope everyone's school year starts off smooth.
Thank you very much. Okay, up next, we have the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Merritt?
Thank you, President Christensen. I want to first begin by just sharing what a pleasure it was to start off the school year on Saturday with our Back to School Bash. We have some pictures there. So many of our students and our community, our staff, came out to really kick off the start of the school year. We had a petting zoo. We had face painting that was just amazing. Look at our young student there in the electric vehicle built by our CTE students. Just a wonderful day, a wonderful day of support, just the magic of the start of the school year, something that can't be duplicated. Want to thank Treasurer Kehoe. Now, he tried to get me in a race in one of the
Obstacle courses.
Obstacle courses, but I knew that I would not be able to stand up straight and report to work on Monday, so I had to say, hey, Carly, can you step in for me? And
Carly beat me.
He did a forward tumble out to try
Do we have a video?
I think we may have a video.
We're going to need evidence of this.
Vice President Sudhu, I saw that you were there as well as Member Ahmad was there. So we just want to make sure that we, again, just thank our community. It gets better and better each year. Most importantly, I need to give a huge shout out to our Communications and Marketing Department. They worked so hard and just continue, again, to just take this event to the next level. So we thank them for their dedication, for their planning, just to make this an overwhelming success and a great way to start off the school year. And speaking of the start off, as we heard from President Christensen, for our teachers, our parapros and our administrators, today they had their Staff Development Day. We were able to use the field as you saw. I want to thank our board members. Look at our band and their new uniforms. Thank you for that support. They look amazing. That is our drum line. They started us off in really a pep rally style. We had three students from their trio with our choir. I think it's an after-school club that they're in. They, I'm going to use the wrong words, but they basically composed or made up this song for Mamma Mia for the staff for this opening day. So it was their own rendition. What word is that that I'm trying to use?
Transposed.
Yeah, that, and it was another rule, when you bring the word, when you bring something together, you make it for that. What is that arrangement?
Heritage.
That all sounds great, but they did. They did it. I'm so proud of them and their talent. And then we had our varsity and our JV pom team from Salem that really just got the energy going. President Christensen gave a wonderful, warm welcome to our staff as well as our PCA President, J.J. Lockwood. And so I think just together, we really kicked off the start of the school year. We had our partners that gave donations so that we had food trucks and beverages, and I think that that was really a nice addition for our staff to come in, coffee and donuts and those fruit bowls, and just a really great way to start off the school year. Now, next year, we're always in competition and we're going to make it even better. This is the new stadium, but we have our eyes on the, now we're not calling them, we're calling them North Stadium. What will the old Varsity Stadium be called? It's East Stadium, so we think that we'll be able to get all staff involved at the next PD. So that's the goal, is to keep it outside, keep it early in the morning, and just keep that excitement going. When we talk about success and the success that we have, the success that our students have, I just want to make sure that I give an opportunity to just amplify some great news that we received from the College Board this month when the scores for the 2025 Advanced Placement exams were released. If you remember, at the end of the year, we gave a report. It was all of our data, and at that point, we were really applauding that 88% of our students taking the Advanced Placement exams received a 3, 4, or 5. The final numbers are in, and 91% of our students received a score of 3 or higher. And if you think about that, the reason that that is so exciting is that a score above 3 usually earns students college course credits, while scores of 4 and 5 often allow students to earn multiple college credit hours. So also, in addition to the 91%, this is over 20% of the national average in terms of that accomplishment. So we're very proud of our students. We're very proud and grateful to our staff for the work that they do to create these environments in which our students can soar. So we thank you for all of your hard work. I want to also just give a shout out to our PCEP Food Service, they win, our PCCS Food Service Department. You know, we've always in the district talked about a well-fed student is a student that is ready to learn, and the effort that our Food and Nutrition Services Department's work to really uphold this mission was recently recognized when PCCS received five Healthy Meal Incentives Awards from the USDA. The awards recognize districts that work to offer healthy options and include student voice and their food service programs. We're so proud of our department. They really are trailblazers as it relates to their breakfast and lunch offerings. The district also earned awards for revamping our menus to offer healthier options, partnering with local agricultural providers, preparing scratch meals, and achieving success in nutrition education. So please join me in congratulating Director of Food and Nutrition Services, Kayla McDaniel, and her staff for their efforts in making our school meal programs a vital part of our students' learning experience. As we celebrate, at the same time, I don't want to miss an opportunity to utilize this platform to just talk about the real struggles that we're dealing with as we're still waiting for our state budget to come through and to be passed, and something that's on the mind of all of our families is what's going to happen with school meals. Right now, we only have a guarantee that school meals will be covered for all through September 30th of 2025, so we want to just encourage all to continue to use your voices for advocacy to our legislators to say, to get this work done, to get our school aid, our budget passed for the state so that we know, you know, beyond just feeding our students in terms of our staffing, we're making hiring decisions, we want to make sure that we can have the best environment for our students with staff, with programs, and making sure all of our needs are met. So again, at this point, we will continue to do what we can to ensure that program remains, but have only a guarantee until September 30th, and so we will keep our families informed of any news as it comes along. Finally, wanted to share some more good news. When we talk about our celebration, we just received the U.S. News and World Report's ranking for the best high schools, and I am so proud to say that all three of our PCEP high schools, that is Plymouth, Salem, and Canton are among the top 36 public high schools in Michigan and within the top 5% of more than 24,000 schools nationwide. Now, that deserves a round of applause. So I'm telling you, hot off the press, sometimes I think there are negative stories that come out, but the stories that we know are true are the facts that are taking place within our schools. There's close to 1,200 high schools in the state of Michigan, public high schools, and the top 36. I think that's something that we should really be proud of our students and our staff. And I talked about that this morning. Everybody collectively owns that, really that honor, because all from pre-K through 12 and beyond were working to educate our students. So these rankings are determined by a number of factors. They include the college readiness, availability of a college-level curriculum, student performance on AP and IB exams, state assessment scores and proficiency rates, understaffed student performance, and graduation rate. So again, we want to thank our PCEP staff and our entire school community, and most importantly, our students for their accomplishments. We're so proud. Finally, I'm going to end today with just a little bond update. So exciting as we go across the community and we see the investment of the bond. We always talk about what our students deserve, what our community expects, and they really got behind us with this 2020 bond. And you're going to see some of the construction highlights that are taking place this summer. We have the tennis courts, it's nearing completion. They are beautiful. The final touches are on the new PCEP stadium that we attended on this today in Phase 3 Edition, which will be put to use this fall. Does somebody know is the first game on the field Thursday or Friday this week?
Thursday.
Thursday. So we want to make sure that we're there. We want to invite our community to come out and get on that field and support our young students because it is something to see. We have the repaving of parking lots at Canton High School, the beginning of renovations at Salem, and that's going to be a long project. I think Salem is one of our oldest schools, but I'm so excited to see what will take place as a part of this bond. We're going to have new lighting. We're going to have bathroom upgrades, studio construction at 881, the park, painting and ceiling tile replacements. We had continued work on the PCEP Innovation Hub. It is really coming along, and we had continued work on the bandroom addition. Work finally continued this summer on an addition and renovations for Farron Elementary School. With Farron, we were there today, and so much progress is being made. I remain hopeful that we will be ready to open our doors. We will, with bright lights, clean bathrooms. The new addition will be, I think, probably February before that opens, but just a beautiful opening for the office. It is just something to behold. So again, thank you to our community for their support of the bond. We are so thrilled to see this progress. I believe in September, we'll have the team come in and just give a better update than I can provide right now, but I just wanted you to share my excitement for the start of this school year. That concludes my report. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you for all those updates. So much to be excited about for this year. Up next, we have citizens' comments. This is, we have this broken up into two sections. This is a light agenda, so we may not run into the second overflow section, but just as a reminder, that the first segment lasts 30 minutes, and if we do have citizens' comments that move us past that 30 minutes, then we will hear them in the overflow section if necessary. Each citizen has three minutes to speak. The board will not respond. This is your time to share and our time to listen. The administration will follow up with each individual who participates in citizens' comments. I do also want to remind folks, please do not share any names when sharing concerns or criticisms unless you have their permission to do so. That being said, I've got my pile here, and up first, we have Heather Gatney.
Hi, my name is Heather Gatney, and I live in the city of Plymouth with my two kids who both go to school in the district, and they're both really excited for a new school year. My youngest just found out who their teacher is going to be yesterday, and we have the open house tomorrow, and then last week, my oldest got his schedule, and it was a good one, so they're excited. It's all beginning to feel real. So I think the start of a new school year is a special time. It's a chance for everyone to get a fresh start and for all of us, parents, teachers, and school leaders, to come together and ask, how can we make this the best, safest, most welcoming place for every one of our students? Last year, I stood here and asked you to make sure our teachers and staff get training to stop the anti-LGBTQ+ bullying that is happening in our schools, specifically to train teachers and staff on the policies protecting kids from harassment, bullying, and aggressive behavior, as well as the policy protecting transgender and gender nonconforming students. Right now, teachers aren't trained on district policy, which puts all of our students at risk, especially queer students. Many of these students face bullying and harassment every day. When nothing is done, it sends the message that they don't belong, but they do belong. Public schools are for every child, regardless of background, and every student deserves to feel safe. I really believe that now, right at the start of the school year, is the perfect moment to set the tone. Let's make it clear that our teachers and staff are here to support every kid and that administration will always stand behind teachers who step up to stop harassment, and that could make all the difference. And I know there are tough challenges ahead, especially with the budget not being sorted out. I can't imagine how hard it is for you all having to make decisions without any of the information that you need, and I truly appreciate all that you do. However, even with all of these pressures, we must remember that queer students in our schools are still suffering. Last year, I shared some of their stories with you, written in their own words. I hope you agree that things need to change. I understand that an elaborate training may not be possible right now, but what about a letter or an email to teachers? Just a reminder about school policy and some encouragement to be proactive. Even a small step like that could make a difference in these kids' lives. It would also help them to feel safe and seen at school. All I'm really asking is that we don't lose sight of how much this matters. Every kid should feel like they belong at school, no exceptions. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have Rachel Hayes.
My name is Rachel Hayes, and I'm a PFLAG board member and a member of Western Wayne Indivisible. Tonight, I would like to discuss our nation's attempt at erasing some of our children. A recent national study has revealed that approximately 724,000 teenagers aged 13 to 17 are transgender. This is not an abstract statistic. These are our children, teens in your classrooms, teens whose voices and identities are very real and deserving of recognition. Our trans youth are under increasing attack across multiple fronts. Federally, data collection efforts that document their existence and well-being are being dismantled, making trans people harder to see, harder to understand, and easier to erase. Meanwhile, the Department of Justice has issued sweeping subpoenas to hospitals demanding intimate identifying records of transgender minors seeking gender-affirming care, threatening patient privacy. And as of today, U of M notified parents of trans kids this. Quote, "In response to unprecedented legal and regulatory threats to our clinicians and our institution, we have made the difficult decision to stop prescribing puberty blockers and gender-affirming hormones for patients under age 19," end quote. The leading hospital in Michigan for gender-affirming care is now denying access to essential evidence-based medical support. Why? Not because of new scientific research that proves it to be harmful. U of M has made it clear that this is not something that they agree with or want to do. No, U of M is denying crucial care because they are under threat from our fascist government. Imagine what these children and their families are facing. This is not only unethical, but amoral and inhumane. And if you are applauding this, then you are amoral and inhumane. So what does this mean for our district here at PCCS? It means that as federal protections falter, our schools become either the front line of defense, or, as some on the board and in our community would like, complicit in erasure. Without a robust affirming and visible framework of support at the local level, transgender students are at even greater risk. This is a critical truth. School isn't just where trans students learn, it's where their dignity is at stake. You, the majority of the board, clearly understand that you wield not just authority, but a responsibility to ensure these children are recognized, protected, and validated. In the face of erasure of data, identity, rights, and even necessary medical care, our schools can be beacons of compassion and common humanity. We have the power to ensure that every transgender student in PCCS has a safe space where they are accepted and appreciated for who they are. To the board majority, I urge you to and continue to act boldly and intentionally for the sake of these kids. Thank you, and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Up next, we have Lori Mayers.
Hi, I'm Lori Mayers, longtime resident of Plymouth and president of PFLAG Plymouth-Canton. As Rachel said, we learned today that the University of Michigan will immediately stop providing gender-affirming care for people who are under 19. Note, that includes 18-year-olds who are legal adults. This is a devastating decision for all the young people and their families who have trusted Michigan Medicine with their health care. This is a direct result of the Trump administration and the HHS's recent actions. How does this affect our schools? It's another attack on trans kids and their right to live authentically. Imagine how you would feel if your health care provider suddenly stopped your course of treatment and prescriptions. Trans kids and all LGBTQ-plus students and staff members need our support now. I urge administrators and staff to follow District Policy 551703 enacted five years ago, and to make sure all staff members and teachers are aware that it requires all staff members to recognize students' pronouns and preferred names. that it requires all staff members to recognize students' pronouns and preferred names. It requires respect for student confidentiality. It allows trans students to use the bathroom that corresponds with their gender identity. It allows any student to use a separate facility if they are uncomfortable in a group bathroom or locker room. It requires training for teachers and staff members on the policy. This is a very difficult time for transgender and non-binary people and our family members. We beg for kindness and respect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. That concludes our citizens' comment section. Okay, up next, we have, um, discussion. First, we have our Board Governance Workshop Date. Um, Dr. Merritt, do you mind ta- telling us a little bit about this?
All right. Last time that we were together, we were trying to find some dates where the majority of the board, we hope all of the board, but we had a couple of members absent, um, could come back together for another workshop with Ms. Penny Kinisch-Williams. We had three dates that we offered Penny. She came back with one date of November the eighth. So I know that that is kind of far in advance, but I wanted to just see if we could check calendars. If this is a Saturday workshop, we would want at least three hours of time. Um, from our kind of to-do list that we came up with Penny, we want to spend some time in this board, uh, governance workshop, working on our, uh, I think, um, our board goals, probably, taking a, a look at board goals, taking a look at, um...
Operating principles.
Operating principles and...
Our new member manual.
Our new member manual. Those are some things that we would take, take a look at. So we wanted to see, could we confirm with her November eighth? And then also look at, uh-oh.
November eight was okay for me before. It's not anymore. I've got a new wedding that I'm going to in Washington, DC.
Okay.
So, I'm out.
So what is the pleasure of the board? Do we want to look for maybe another evening with her? These, I, I, um, asked for dates of, uh, Saturday, and that's it. We had those three dates that we were available. We could go further into October. I think also that we would, if we're looking at board goals, though, we may want to look at a night, maybe after the next board meeting, if we have a tighter agenda that we can get those going, maybe have that discussion so we don't wait too late to get your goals going. But, um, would you want me to look for a date in the evening or just try to look for a Saturday?
It feels like Saturdays have become a little challenging for the board, and I would really hate to push this work off much further. If we could look towards perhaps the, after a board meeting or during the week, if, if you guys would all be amenable to that.
If we can have board meetings like this.
I know, like after, this evening would be perfect. You're right.
Unfortunately, the calendar is stacking up.
I know, I know. Perhaps we, we look to that and see Penny's availability.
So looking for after a board meeting or, because that's a three hour, so that's kind of, I think it's a little rough.
That's true.
Because even if it ends at eight o'clock, that's kind of late. So maybe a non, like a, maybe a non-board meeting Tuesday possibly?
Okay.
Okay. If we're looking at our calendars right now, is there a non-board meeting Tuesday that's not a good date already while we have everybody, almost everybody here?
I could do October seventh and... October twenty-first.
Are we looking into October?
Is that what you're doing, or you want to do it sooner than that?
We can do October.
I'm sorry, I thought you guys had mentioned October, but that's fine, I can do it.
Yeah, I can only do October seventh based on what happens to state.
Yeah, October seventh works for me as well.
Does that work for everybody else, October seventh?
It's a Tuesday, and, and non-board meeting Tuesday.
Doesn't work for me.
It doesn't work for me.
Doesn't work for Jen, all right? All right, let's keep going.
We want to go back into September then, or?
How about September thirtieth?
I'm open. Oh.
It's a Tuesday.
You're not, okay.
Nope.
I'm sorry, is that not good?
Not for a new bum.
Okay.
How about, uh, October twenty-first?
I am available.
Isn't it the one you said you couldn't do?
Yeah, I can only do the fourteenth of October.
Fourteenth of October, let's see that. Oh, that's a board meeting day.
Oh, I'm sorry, the seventh. I'm sorry, seventh of.
Seventh is good. And no, Jen wasn't available.
Oh, you're not available.
Okay. And maybe another day outside of Tuesday.
I know.
Yeah.
We did do a Monday last time, so we would have to do a non-what meeting?
SVA hasn't determined our calendar yet.
Could we do after SPA on October one, on Wednesday?
October one on Wednesday, what does that look like?
Because the end is six-thirty.
Six-thirty, thirty-nine, thirty, that's not bad.
Works for me.
I'm fine.
All right, we're gonna ask her about October first from possibly six-thirty to nine-thirty.
Mm-hmm.
All right. How about, uh, anything else? We already said no to the thirtieth that week, so let's go to the next week. How about, uh... October eighth? It's a Wednesday?
That's fine with me.
I can do October eighth.
All right, we can offer her maybe?
Yeah.
I cannot.
Cannot, so take that off the list and keep going to the next week? So we, and we didn't ask her for any October Saturdays. Does October eighteenth work for anyone?
It does not.
It does not? Okay, keep it moving.
I apologize.
Um, did we say October twenty-first yet? That Tuesday, did we go that far?
Yeah, we, I can't.
Okay, how about the twenty-second? I skipped a week, it was, that was a board meeting week.
October... October twenty-second?
Oh.
How does, how's that look for the team? That works for me, works for you?
That works, I'm pretty sure.
Fifteenth and the twenty-second both work for me.
How about the fifteenth for everyone else?
I'm good with the twenty-second and the fifteenth.
As of right now, they work, and the first does not work.
Here we go. Okay. All right, so we'll take the first off.
It's fifteenth, third is twenty-second.
All right, so right now, we're looking at October fifteenth, going once, going twice, gone, October twenty-sixth. These are possibilities, once, twice. We're gonna hope that Judy is in, all right? These are two dates I'm gonna offer. I'd like to get a third one while we're here, just in case, to be safe.
Okay.
Uh, can we look at, um, how about the thirtieth of October?
That's fine by me.
Thursday?
Mm-hmm. Thursday.
As of right now, it works.
Okay.
I'm always hesitant because my work travel schedule changes really fast, but I, as of now, it works.
All right, so I'm right now, October fifteenth, the twenty-second, and the thirtieth. I will ask, and I will let you know in board notes if those dates are available.
Thank you.
And then we'll let...
Will you check with Judy? Why don't you check with Judy?
Yes. All right, thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay, we'll get there. Um, all right, up next, we have board team building ideas. Um, so we, uh, we received a really good suggestion. We've been working really hard to target these dates for our board governance workshops and continue, uh, the work around, um, kind of gelling our team of eight professionally. Um, but there was a suggestion on, on some team building activities outside of the board governance work itself. And so I'm gonna actually kick it over to Member Voss if she can share some of her suggestions. And if anyone else has any suggestions, this is an open forum for that.
Well, after the discussion on finding a date, I don't know how it's gonna work. But our family, every year, volunteers at the Miracle Field, and I was setting up our volunteering this year, and I thought about, you know, wouldn't that be a great opportunity for us to be together to being, doing good in the community and also seeing the good in each other?
Mm-hmm.
So I just, I, you know, I don't know if you all are aware of the Miracle Field and the great things that it does, but just threw that out there to...
When, when did they play? I can't remember.
Saturdays.
So it's Saturday.
Do you have any dates in mind for that?
So they're every Saturday in September and October right now, and their games, um, are like, I think there's three or four games a Saturday. So there's several, you know, time options. It's all on the website, yeah, the volunteering schedule.
Okay. I, I love that idea. I think it's a great idea for all of us to get together and, as you say, um, uh, support our community and, and see the good in, in each other. Um, how do, how do we determine a date that works well for everybody?
And maybe even if you, if you do multiple days, maybe even if everybody can't make it, you can still get a majority?
It doesn't provide a quorum problem, right?
So that is a great question. Great, great question. So anytime you have a quorum, at least four board members present, we cannot discuss board business, so this would be a social event which is allowable. We can't have anything that's deliberated, that you would, um, potentially come up for a vote. So as long as we are there and we are doing community service, and that is allowable for all board members to be there. So it's such a great question. Thank you for that.
I wonder if we can do like, um, like a calendar signup or availability? And I forget the, the link we used to use.
Calendar or something like that.
Yeah, if we can get those dates.
Sure.
And then send it to everyone, and everyone can check off all the dates that they're available.
I will say, based on that question, though, gotta be careful even about collaborating on that, so, because that would be a decision that you're making.
No, but it's not a decision, it's a decision for a social...
It's a social event.
It's a social activity. We're not, we're not doing it to collaborate on that board.
It's not a workshop?
Yeah, exactly. It is purely a social event.
I still kind of feel like maybe you were through the president.
I, you know what I will do? I will, um, share the, the dates, and, um, I will, if you were able to email me your availability, I will then share at our next board meeting the few dates that we've maybe targeted, a few groups can come together, okay?
Do you want me to get the dates?
Yes, if you could send that to me, that'd be helpful.
Yes, I will do that.
Thank you. Okay. Perfect. Great idea.
I love it.
Yeah. And if anyone else has ideas that they want to share this evening or any other time, certainly we'll be able to.
I have ideas for a dance for all of us.
Okay. All right. We're dancing. Dr. Merritt was dancing today, so I know she can do it.
I was hoping that you guys were all gonna go to the obstacle course, but I, I clear,